I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It's May 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. Please stand with me. And bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for this day, beautiful day, and thank you for this wonderful community we live in. Thank you for giving us the opportunity as commissioners to come and serve you and our community. Please guide us with the decisions we make. Let us be mindful of the people that we're voting for and the future of our community. Guide us and direct us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Yes.
I'd like to remove item 9A from the agenda. Withdrawing my original motion in its entirety.
Okay, so a removal? Okay.
And I'll second the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
After amendments.
Okay, and Commissioner Crutcher?
Mayor, I would like to have a hearing on whether or not the exigent circumstances exist to add to the agenda. I don't know where exactly it would go, but just an update on the police investigation and any discussion that needs to take place on where we are with that.
I don't know if there's any information, but we can hear it. I mean, if you want to add it.
I think you'd better go back later.
Well, that's up to council. I mean, but I just want to add that as an item on the agenda. I mean, I'm just asking for a hearing to determine whether or not exigent circumstances exist at this point. And if we determine that they do, based off of the resolution we've passed in the past as relates to adding things to the agenda, then we can add that item. And then we can decide then what action needs to be taken.
Well, I can tell you what I was told before the meeting started. Nothing could be disclosed to the public from what happened today.
Well, that's fine. Maybe we do need to...
Have executive session.
Well, maybe that's the case, but I think we still need to add it.
Okay.
We'll need to discuss whether or not that's inappropriate. That's appropriate being that it's not on the agenda.
Okay, well, as mayor, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I would love to, if there's something we need to know, go into executive session. But before we do, I'd like to, if you believe there's something has occurred and we need to put it on the agenda, then I'd like to do that.
And mayor, I had, I don't, I don't know what Commissioner Johnson's speaking of either. I had no idea what had occurred or not occurred. I'm just trying to figure out where things are. I didn't have any information.
Okay.
Or do I?
That wasn't my purpose for asking for it to be put on the agenda, was that I had some information to share. It was that I wanted to know if there was any information to share.
The only information I had is this is not complete yet.
Okay.
Sheriff hasn't released anything. That's all I know.
I can say that there's been good progress, but there's been no written, if that helps, you know, so.
Well, Larry, where do we need to put this, just in terms of a hearing, on whether or not we should add it to the agenda based on exigent circumstances?
It's, it would be new business. You could add it ahead of A, or you could put it at the end after the B, H, after G. Whichever one you want to do.
H is fine, especially if we may have to go into an executive session. And I think putting it at H would make more sense.
Okay, is there anything, Commissioner Johnson, any comments? Okay.
You'll have to vote on whether to add it or not.
Okay, I know. But don't we have to hear, don't you typically, we have to hear why? And then if we all agree, then we put it on, and then we vote?
Well, you can put it down there as a hearing and just have all that when you have the hearing. But you'd have to add it as an item to your agenda.
Right.
And if the hearing, if it's not an exigent circumstance, then it goes away. If it is, then you have a hearing.
Okay, so we're going to put it as new business, H or old? What did I...
It'd be new business.
New business. Okay, for approval of the agenda, yes?
We need to defer items 10D through G.
What was the first number?
10D, E, F, and G. Those relate to the budget, according to an email that the CFO sent this week.
Okay, so we're going to defer B, E, F, and G. We're going to add H for the hearing. And then, of course, if we determine, then I for the police. Any other changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Three is citizens' comment. Okay. Four, awards and recognition.
Mayor, there is no awards and recognitions tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Five is public announcements.
The emission testing every Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to noon. The high school graduation tomorrow night at 7:00. And I know there's a sign out there that says that you use King Road to access the rear, actually the front of the school, I think, just where our school is, but they would like for you not to use that road that goes in by the tennis courts.
Okay.
And as far as I know, it's going to be held inside. I'm not sure about any overflow, but that's what I've been told. So if y'all have any further information, we'd be more than happy to announce it at this time if you'd like.
Okay.
I believe you had to go get tickets, and I believe each student that was graduating was allowed 12 tickets. And unless, if somebody turned some over back in, if you needed more, they would go them out at that time. You'd have call back and check. They're not going to call people, let them know they've got extra tickets. So just, if you needed extra tickets, make sure you call the school and check on them, rather than just going out there. Because that's, it's going to be limbed because it's going to be in the gym. That's all I know.
Okay. Are we having any more starlight? When's the next?
I can, Keith is out sick tonight.
June 10th.
June 10th, okay.
It's from 6:30 to nine.
Okay, just around the corner then, huh? Okay, if that's it, we'll move on to staff comments, or we'll start with Mr. Hall as codes director.
Thank you, ma'am. I've been reporting on this for some time now, and it's finally come to fruition. They were out planning today. We do have the sign available. It's a temporary sign. This is for the Roadscapes Project at 3:00 PM, Sunday afternoon. I do have Sergeant Hill in place to, if anyone parks at the Bank of America, which I do have their permission. I stopped by there today and got that. He'll be there with the gator if people have a hard time walking or anything like that, that he can help with that. And I do have officers available for traffic control. And look for everybody to be out there, because this is a 10-year project that's now come to fruition. And I guess you've talked to Dan Cubic, I guess.
Yes, yes, they're, they're going to be there.
Good, great.
We may want, we may check with the Boys and Girls Club. They've let us use that van in the past sometimes.
Okay.
To pick here some people over there. I'll get in touch with them, and you can put it on the website if you want to.
Okay, good. And it will be on the website tomorrow. Hopefully it'll be up where we can do that branded, to put this on the website.
One of the things is, it's not far from Bank of America. So it is walkable, but it's going to be a traffic as far as crossing, yeah. But we will have, as Mr. Hall mentioned, the gator available for anybody that has, needs transportation. That's great if you want to see the van, but can take them down, that's fine too. But we're going to meet at the Bank of America parking lot and then just go down together. Very excited. I, of course, think it's, it's one of the most exciting things to me, just because it is a 10-year old project. It's a project that we thought that went away due to lack of funding. And through Mr. Hall coming on and researching, we learned that we can still do it. And it's just going to mean so much to our community, just as far as, you know, the beautification process. And I'm really excited. And I was, Mr. Hall and I had a chance to talk with the economic development guy from Williamson County Chamber who came out Monday, and he was really excited for us. You know, said, "I didn't even know about that." And so I can't wait to finally get the project done. And I just think it's going to be wonderful, and thanks to Dan and the crew, but I, that originally did the hard work 10 years ago. But I can't thank you enough, Mr. Hall, for making this happen. I mean, it had died, and it had gone through several city managers and different boards, and I applaud you for that.
It was, it was a project that I voted on when I sat on the Board of Commissioners, as well as Mr. Johnson. I presume he's voted for it. I can't, can't remember, but it's been that long ago, so.
Well, I just applaud you because the follow-through and just making it happen again, and I think it's really going to mean a lot to our citizens.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to Ms. Johnson, you got anything for us?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to mention, we do have several job openings listed on the website. Obviously, the first one's the city manager. There's still an opening in the street department. And I'm not sure if the police was filled yet or not, so check that for job openings. I do have tonight a census letter. We are wrapping up the census verification. I believe we have one more meeting next week with Upper Cumberland Development District on that. And I have a letter for you to sign tonight, just to send to the state as part of that package. We're working on the July 3rd event. We are currently soliciting sponsors, vendors. All that information is on the website, as well as you can stop by City Hall and pick that up. We're also going to open up some sponsorship requests to the citizens this year. I will be posting next week the budget for the event on the website, just so that everyone knows where the money we get is going exactly. Something that we would like to do special this year is we've borrowed a flag in the past years from a couple of different locations that we've hung on the ladder truck. We would like to purchase our own to use for our city events. So that's one of the things we're requesting donations from the citizens from, as well as new blunting for the front of City Hall. Ours is quite worn and dirty, dingy. So we would like those two items. We also have board openings listed on the website, just a reminder to submit applications for those and letters were sent to the existing seat holders, so we're receiving that documentation back as well.
Great, thank you. No questions? Mr. Darty?
Thank you, mayor. Everything is going at a fast pace right now. Seems like there's so many things that we're really close to putting a bow on. I guess I'll piggyback on the census. I'm real excited about meeting with Upper Cumberland and getting that verification. Also, we want to tell everybody that, thank you for their patience with the new phone system. We were down on internet, and we couldn't get on our network today. And any, anybody that was, had any inconvenience, we just appreciate their understanding. This should be, this is something we've been working on for a year, and it is finally happening. And we're looking forward to being able to do something with the fire hall and the nature center too. But we just can't do that. It's not economically feasible at this time. But we're very excited to be moving forward with our new phone system. Thank you.
Okay, and you said Keith is out, so... Okay, great. Not great for the baby, but thank you. We'll move on. Hope the baby gets well. Okay, approval of the consent, yes?
Before we move on, one other thing about the park, I maybe should have said it during the announcements since Keith's not here. But I know Jenny was still, had some openings for the summer programs.
Great.
So if people are interested and haven't signed up, they need to contact her.
Okay, great. Okay, and then, which that's good to know. I have people that can't get in, so I'll refer them. With that being said, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to old business, the new A. Discuss and take action on city manager hiring. And Ms. Johnson, do you have any updates from the meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I do. The city manager search committee met on Tuesday night, and they just wanted to relay the following recommendations or requests to the board. One of them is that they be able to view the interviews, either in person or via video. The second is that they would like to participate in a meet and greet. I think it's very important to evaluate those soft skills. I know that's been discussed previously as well. And then the third item was, they would request a final evaluation of all these skills kind of together after the interview process, as well as the meet and greet.
Okay. Okay, do y'all want to take that to a vote, or any discussions or thoughts on the request?
I move that we approve all three of those requests.
Second.
Okay, I got a first and second. Any discussion?
I'm confused. As part of the ranking process, they're going to do that?
Yes, they want to, what they're doing is developing a matrix to evaluate the candidates on their hard skills. So what was submitted in the application, the job description, so that's the first step they're going to do. Then they would like to further take that evaluation, view the interviews, be able to participate in the meet and greet, to rank them on their soft skills as well, and then kind of do a final evaluation based on the combination of all those things.
Yes, go ahead.
It sounds like that they're wanting to do what I think I may have, you might have not been here when I mentioned it at one of the meetings, but it was that they do the evaluation or they do the ranking based off of the resumes that they're going to be reviewing. Although they won't participate in the interviews, they would have access to either be present at the interview or view the interviews. And then before we voted as a board, just give us one final, their opinion or ranking. Not in any way are we, we have to necessarily choose who they rank number one, but just to give us a final thought before we voted as a board.
Well, that, that part's not necessarily bad, but the meet and greet thing, I think, is above board. That's just, I mean, overboard. That's just... I mean, how many people are we going to have? We can't fit them all in the nature center where we had it the last time. And how many candidates are we going to have come to that?
Well, as of right now, we don't have a, too terribly a lot of candidates that have even applied, so I don't know that we have to worry about space.
How many have applied?
We have four applicants that have followed the correct procedure at this point. We still have a couple of weeks, almost a couple of weeks.
So as, with that being said, I don't know that we have to really worry about spacing. And I don't, I mean, it still doesn't go down to, there, in no way does the committee think they're making the final decision, but they're just realizing on paper, you know, you're looking, so it'll give us two different rankings and just the opportunity to give just a final opinion overview. I say it's harmless. You get the citizens involved, and I don't see that there's a problem. And it's, it'll be helpful to have another set of eyes and ears, so I don't have a problem with it. You know, I think we all know in the end, I mean, we have to vote on it as a board. But, you know, I think having the citizens buy in and input and support would be very helpful for the next city manager.
Randy, can I ask you, where these four candidates came from?
You can ask, but I honestly don't know. And that's something that we...
I'm talking about the advertisement part of it.
Oh, we don't know. We don't know.
Can we ask?
We can.
I mean, if we're not, if it's always not very meaningful, if it's going out like we thought it was going out.
I think a lot will probably turn them in in the next couple of weeks. A lot of people will wait.
Okay.
But we should, we can definitely find that out.
I'm just concerned about that.
And so out of the, there's really like seven that have turned in their applications. So even though you say they didn't follow the procedures, they're still going to be presented. You just might note they're lacking this, okay. Okay. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. New business, discuss and take action on 17,000 funding requests for Dr. Rice for History Village Water Dash Sewer. Commissioner Bassell.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I'd like, after I give a brief statement, I'd like for your permission to ask Dr. Rice to say a few words, if that'd be okay, to substantiate the request. As everyone knows, we have been dealing with the, trying to get up and get started. We had a very, about, it's been almost a year now. We had a very nice opening session and on the QT, I think Dr. Rice has even given a couple of tours out there to elementary groups and some other folks. But they have worked very diligently this year to get to the point of doing the finishing work, and they've just run out of money. And in order to get a permanent certificate of occupancy, we've got to get that restroom hooked up. City Manager Hall has worked with WADC, and we have a commitment to provide sewer. We just need a little funding. And I would propose, in fact, I'd make a motion that we approve this and that we fund it from the five cent tax that we dedicate to capital improvement slash parks.
Second.
Okay, a first and second, and Tom, obviously that money's still there.
Yes, ma'am, but we have set aside $85,000 in reserves for parks.
Okay.
And I'd like for, if it's okay at this point, since we have a first and a second, that Dr. Rice, would you come up and provide more detail as to where we're going with this money and what it's being used for?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding this request. It is neither frivolous nor should it be looked upon as unexpected. Since 2007, when restoration of Triangle School began nine years ago, it has been known that adding a restroom and kitchenette would be a part of the restoration. This will be verified as you consider the second point, which is the Board of Commissioners asked that permission be requested from the Tennessee Historical Commission to make these additions of the restroom and the kitchenette without endangering the school's listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The Tennessee Historical Commission provided permission to do the work. A certificate of occupancy for Triangle School cannot be issued without having a working restroom. All the work and money that have been spent by the city of Fairview and the Fairview Historical Association concerning the restoration of Triangle School will be of no value whatsoever if the building cannot be utilized. Number four, as has been mentioned, the water authority has approved the required sewer tap. The same tap can be utilized when restrooms are added at the proposed farmer's market. Number five, recently, the Fairview Historical Association spent more than $13,000, all the money and profits from our auction that was held under the tent last summer, have spent more than $13,000 having the structural work completed for the kitchenette and restroom. Mr. Vershoda has just recently completed the refinishing of the third classroom at Triangle School, and the floor is beautiful. Currently, the Historical Association has less than $400 in its account. Number six, the requested $17,000 represents one cent from the five cents that was set aside for use of the Fairview Park system, of which the historical village is a part. After the $17,000 appropriation is made, if it is, $68,000, the value of four of the five cents, would remain for other park uses. If none of these funds have been appropriated at this time, in addition, $85,000 would remain for debt service, and $85,000 would remain for streets, all from the 15 cents that was very wisely... that was very wisely set aside for the three purposes. And finally, number seven. And after I make this statement, I'll be glad to entertain any questions, if you are any. It is requested that what funds, if any, that would remain from the seventeen thousand dollars after the cost of the taps and labor and materials to connect the water and sewer to the restroom and the kitchenette, the purchase of a handicap that is taller than usual, commode for the restroom, and the purchase of a water heater have been made. Whatever remaining funds there may be, if any, that they be provided to the Historical Association for uses which would include enlarging the parking area behind the school, a gravel parking area along Highway 100, which would eventually serve the farmer's market, handrails for the two back steps and the front porch of the school, and enlarging and fencing the retention pond for purposes of safety. Are there any questions? Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and second. Any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Darty.
I might recommend we, we put this in, in this year's fiscal budget or do a budget amendment. I think we'd have a hard time getting a budget amendment done before the, the time needed to, to have two readings for this, this year. But that, that's just, we may, we may have to have a, probably gonna have to have a special meeting anyway. We could, we could do that. But I, I think we could work that into the budget and have it very effective seven to one, if that works with the Historical Society.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Rice, what, what's the timeframe for completing that work? Do you know?
That would depend on the-
If we approve this?
We'd want to begin immediately, but whether, when work begins, it would depend upon the water authority. I had, I was told by City Manager Hall a few minutes ago, when the meeting began, that he will be, will be, if this is approved, he would arrange with the engineer for the water authority to meet with me and we can discuss like the location of the ground or would the taps be located hopefully on the west view side or would they be on the 100 side where the lines would run, that sort of thing. But obviously, that would be more of a function of it, of that being, I knew it would, it would begin immediately.
In what a way is the city envision utilizing that, that floor in the future? I mean, are people gonna be able to, is it gonna be, have open, open hours or what's gonna happen with that?
Dr. Rice, will you move back up if you were, yeah?
Sorry, Dr. Rice, I should have asked.
No problem. I can use the exercise.
Well, although I've done so without having a certificate of occupancy, I hope you won't put me in jail, but we have had some tours of school age groups. And, and of course, there was no restroom available for them to use. In, in fact, one of the kids had to leave the meeting and, and I guess go to a store or something and then come back. There has recently been established in Fairview, a group of interested adults and kids, I'm sure, in dramatics. I anticipate there being great interest in utilizing that first room, which has a stage. Of course, that would require restroom usage. It's been my dream, from the time restoration work began nine years ago, that eventually worked into the, the park system's summer programs would be a camp called History Camp, as some communities, I know Dixon does, has, which would be located at Triangle. I envision, there, there have been requests in the past for the use of the facility, which wasn't completed, for homecomings, class reunions, wedding receptions, and things of that sort, all of which, of course, would require the use of a restroom. But, so those are some reasons we would use the restroom. But even if none of that were true, we can't get a certificate of occupancy legally to walk in the building without a working restroom.
Oh, I'm ready to vote for the, the money for the restroom.
Oh, I understand that.
I was just curious as to-
Understand that. So it's, I, I think we've just begun to see what can happen. Scouts, four-aid clubs. I've talked to the principals at the elementary schools. They're, they're looking forward to having tours. We've had scout tours. We've had school, school aides tours. Those kinds of things. And, and obviously, the need for the restroom would be obvious. I am hoping, this is something that would entirely be your call, but I am hoping that eventually, and that shouldn't be too long, depending on how fast we can get this work done, that a group, perhaps Chamber of Commerce or someone out like that, could have an office in that back room, which would contain the restroom and the little kitchenette, so they could have your lunch there and so forth. Not only would that add security, somebody'd be there during daytime, but also somebody could be there and to unlock the buildings, help conduct tours and things of that sort as that happens. We've, this has been low-key. It's, it's hard to believe. It's been a year since we had our grand opening and then we had to lock the doors. We got a temporary permit to conduct the grand opening without a regular certificate of occupancy. So we need to go ahead and get that done and get a certificate of occupancy on the other buildings, which of course don't have and will not have restrooms and water. But, but certainly that building will have.
Okay, thank you.
Does that take care of it?
Yeah, I think we've-
Okay.
Got it. Appreciate it. Okay, so the big question now is, we'll take it to vote, but whether or not to put it in next budget. But it sounds like it's gonna take care of itself, because we have to get it to pass two readings. There's some work that Mr. Hall has to do with Dixon Water. So it probably is gonna make sense to put it in the 2017 budget, just to make it easier. But you can move forward with, with the whole process.
That can be arranged as far as the meeting with the engineer next week.
Yes.
Thank you. That, of course, is your decision. But since five cents were set aside in the current budget and since that money exists, then why can't that money be spent from the current budget and not have to go through the delays and delays of additional meeting? The money exists. There's eighty-five thousand dollars there. We're requesting one-fifth of it, seventeen thousand dollars. It's, it's in the budget and it's, it's in the balance.
Right, and it is. But what he was saying, it has to go through two readings and there's process anyway.
Why, why would it have to do that? I'm just, I'm not doubting it. I'm just questioning.
Appropriate the money.
Amendment to the budget.
We haven't, we didn't budget this year, so we have to appropriate the money, so it has to go through two readings.
You should have it July 1st.
Sure, yeah, either way. Go ahead.
Yes, it is state law that, that all municipalities have to appropriate the funds before they spend any money. And it does take a, two readings for the budget to be amended. That's just, I believe that is the state's way of not keeping municipalities from a knee-jerk expenditure or slowing things down. That's just the way the process works.
Yes, sir. Let me ask one more question.
Okay, but let me make a comment real quick. Either way, if we said tonight and we did the two readings, it's gonna be July 1st. But if we put it in the budget, it's gotta be voted by the end of June and you would get it July 1st and you don't have to go through the readings. So either way, the money can come July 1st.
Tonight doesn't count as first read?
I believe it's gotta come in-
You don't have an ordinance, do you?
It's gotta come in, in form of an amendment.
Since the money is in the budget for parks, why, it's, why does it require an amendment since the money's in there for parks?
Because we didn't appropriate it. The money exists, but we have to appropriate it by law. And it wasn't part of this year's budget.
That's not necessarily true, but with this being over the city manager's spending limit, it is. But I mean, he could spend ten thousand and then seven thousand and not even have to have any readings. We just come back, come back and move it later.
Yeah, I, I think that's how we can go ahead and proceed is as long as they don't spend initially up to ten thousand dollars, I think they can get started.
Yeah.
And then we just doing the paperwork behind. That's, that's all I, that's the way I see it.
Yep.
Well, you could do the ten thousand and then appropriate the remaining amount in next year's budget with this.
But either way, Dr. Rice, it's not gonna stop, it's not gonna he, uh, roadblock your progress. You, you and Mr. Hall can go ahead and start with what you need to do.
I'm not gonna vote to do that, but Larry, go ahead.
I wouldn't recommend that you, you do that. Yes, the city manager can spend up to ten thousand dollars, but there's, the comptroller's office looks at that as if you take ten and then seven and then ten, that you're doing it to avoid the state requirement that you don't spend the money before it's appropriated. Now, you can still get started on it because you know you're gonna have the money there by July 1st and they're probably not gonna get finished with it by that time.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't recommend that you break it up like that, because there is some case law to the effect that, and there's some comptroller's comments that says that's a no-no.
Right, okay.
I will meet with him and the water authority at Dixon. Their billing process may wait till after July 1st anyway, so. Well, I'll, I'll talk to the water authority about that.
Okay. Well, and I think the, I think we'll go, take it to vote and see what everybody wants, where they want to go with it, but I don't think it's really an issue for me, whether or not to spend it. We just gotta do it the correct way and legally. And either way, it's gonna take you to July 1st, so let's move on.
If we, if we are gonna spend money this budget year, I'll just have an amendment. We can be going and as long as at the end of the year, you know, our, our budget is, is we spend what we say we're gonna spend, we'll be okay.
Okay.
It just, if we're spending it out of last year, last year's money, it needs to be out of fiscal year 16. It needs to be appropriated in fiscal year 16.
Okay. Any more discussion? And let's, can you give us the original motion?
Just, Commissioner Bussell just requested to approve the funding of the seventeen thousand dollars from that five cent that was for parks and capital improvement. And Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sutton seconded.
Okay, so do we need to amend that to say out of next budget?
Well, in effect, what are we doing? Are we really just saying that we want you to draw up a, a budget amendment? Is that what we're asking for? I mean, is that what in effect we're doing?
Well, we're, yeah, we're approving Tom to draw up a budget amendment. And Tom should just do that based upon what he thinks is best as CFO. That's what I think.
Only difference is it will cost us attorney money to do it that way versus the budget. No, you do it all? Okay. But he reads it, doesn't he? Approves it?
Yes, I do read it.
Okay.
And if there's something I have a problem with, I call Tom.
Okay.
Just for clarification, reason we do it that way. I certainly could draw it, but Tom's got the, the ordinance there. He has the figures. The other way would be more inefficient, because first thing you have to do is say, I need this ordinance. Okay, send me the figures. All right, I draw the ordinance, send it back to him there. But these figures correct, because people make mistakes getting there. I can make mistakes putting them in. It's easier, he just goes ahead and draws his budget amendment and then they send it, he sends it to me. I get it in the package and look at it. If I got a problem, then I, I call him.
Okay. Well, I think we can still proceed. And if it has to go through two readings, it can still be a budget amendment out of this one either way. Let's just do it right and move on. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You got something on impact?
Okay, that would bring us to, I guess, the new B. Discuss and take action on impact fee. Vice Mayor Sutton.
City Manager, do you have anything else on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I've had one person get back with me on, on a range figure for an impact study. And that is our engineering firm that we use, Grigsby Maloney. Their range figure is twenty to twenty-five thousand. They would like to, if, if they, they want us to move forward with it. The other firm that I contacted has not gotten back with me. But if they want us, if y'all want me to move forward with that, they'll give me a, a written proposal and then a timeline of how long it'll take to get it done, so. But Tom and I actually had this very figures in the new budget. I don't know how that come about, but it, the same thing was coded to us by Grigsby Maloney, so. That is where we're at right now. So I'll be waiting on which way y'all want me to move forward with. And I'll, we'll get a, we'll get a written proposal from them.
Go ahead.
No.
Excuse me, Mayor, before we act on C, we skip item B.
That's what I was about to ask. That's all we did.
It said deferred.
The drug claim ordinance?
No, D through G were deferred.
Okay, I, I thought it was B also.
Yeah, somebody said B, because I marked out B, too.
Snook bomb.
Okay, so.
Move to suspend the rules in order to deal with item C, since we're already discussing.
Sounds like a fair one.
Second.
Okay, let's move on. And y'all will have to draw.
I need a motion to, for, for us to vote on, for him to move forward with obtaining the information, only the information that he needs.
I would, because it's gonna involve probably quite a bit of money.
But not at this time?
Not at this time, if the project will.
And I'd make that motion that we approve it, City Manager, move forward with getting the information on the bid process for the impact fee.
Second.
Okay, first and second.
Addy, you need to take a vote on suspending the rules.
Okay. I had a first and second on that, so all in favor of suspending?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for keeping me in order. Okay, the impact fee, we have a first and second on that. Any more discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going back to B and you're gonna have to look in your minutes, because I think I stated when I read the motion that we deferred B. Because I Xed it out and wrote deferred by it. Okay, we'll have to look back at the tape, make sure we're right. If not, we'll come back. But, because I think I read that before I took the motion. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed like that it is. And if we find something different from the minutes or the tapes, we can put it back on the agenda. Okay, so that will be item B. Discuss or take action on first reading bill 2016- Discuss or take action on first reading bill 2016-15.
Ordinance number 930. An ordinance for the city of Fairview, Tennessee adopting at the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year 2016, 2017, Mr. Doctor.
On the wrong one.
That's what it says on mine.
B is in boy.
I know, that's, that's what mine says too.
Oh, your B says that?
Yeah. It says discuss and take action on reading bill 2016-15, an ordinance number 929, an ordinance.
No, Tony read actually 2016-16, ordinance number 930.
That's, that's my mistake.
Okay, I was like, that's what mine says.
Confused, I did have B marked out there, so I'll go back to B. Discuss or take action on first reading bill number 2016-15, ordinance number 929. An ordinance for an amendment to the city of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, budget drug fund, Mr. Doctor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an amendment to appropriate $12,000 out of the drug fund to pay for shortfalls in the salary, overtime, tuition and machinery line items. I can go into further explanation, but that's, just want to keep the drug fund in budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Does that bring us to H because I sure haven't marked up paper? Okay. With the, H will be the hearing. So if you want to proceed with the hearing.
B, to add something according to our ordinance, it has to be either an emergency or an exigent circumstance. And I'd like to say a couple of things about that. I'll say very little about an emergency because obviously this, I don't know exactly what is going to be discussed, but I don't think it rises to the level of an emergency. It doesn't affect somebody's property or anybody's property or anybody's life, danger of losing their life or limb at this time. It would have to be on an exigent circumstance. And let me just tell you a little bit of what the case law says on an exigent circumstance and throw out a few cautions from a legal standpoint. Whether you find it an exigent circumstance or not is your call and I would in no way attempt to infringe upon that. But the case law on an exigent circumstance says that it's a circumstance that falls short of an emergency, but is sufficient for the city or this board to feel like that it's something that is of sufficient necessity to be heard at this time rather than wait to call a special meeting and advertise it. Now, I do, I will say this and want the board to be aware of that. The comptroller's office and the office of open records frowns on this type of thing and that's the reason we wrote the ordinance. TML frowns on it because what it amounts to is hearing something that did not have any previous announcement before this meeting. Therefore, thus the reason that it has to rise to some level of concern that you must discuss it to prevent something bad happening to the city or bad happening to the citizen. If it doesn't, it doesn't meet the threshold of being an exigent circumstance. The only things that I'd like to caution you about and before discussions as to what comes out or what's said, please be mindful of the fact that you're probably going to be discussing an investigation that was authorized by this board. You need to consider what is being brought out tonight or what is said, how that might affect your, the, not the conduct of the investigation, but might affect the effectiveness of the investigation or the ineffectiveness of the investigation. The second thing is you might want to consider, and I don't know what is down the road, but what effect it might have on future either administrative or legal proceedings. So that having said that, whether you add to discuss this, is it something that meets a criteria of such necessity that you can't wait? I don't know, have no idea where the investigation stands, but what is it sufficient to endanger possibly investigation in future proceedings? Having said that, that's up to you as to whether you determine there's an exigent circumstance.
Okay, Commissioner Crutcher.
I think you have several points. One, this affects the, talking about affecting property, this affects the property of the citizens of Fairview. We've, we have three employees that are on paid administrative leave and have been on paid administrative leave for quite some time. This started in February, on February 1st to be exact, with employees being placed on administrative leave shortly thereafter. We're now almost in June, we're in the middle of May to be fair. And, you know, I can't think of anything more exigent than this right now. This is something that we have fumbled around and kicked around and is, you know, and it's just inexplicable, really. I mean, I know that we asked the sheriff, and to be clear, Mr. Cantrell mentioned that this board voted for this investigation. We didn't vote for there to be a criminal investigation. We don't have the ability to say we want a criminal investigation. I mean, I think that's something that law enforcement, they either undertake that or they don't. We voted in an executive session and-
We can't vote in an executive session.
Well, excuse me, we didn't vote in executive session. I guess we, through communications with the sheriff, had a conversation about the sheriff conducting an investigation of policy. That was what happened at the executive session in a conference call with the sheriff. Now.
But it was put on an agenda item. It's put on an agenda item and it was brought out here whether or not we were going to move forward with, and it was all done during your wanting to do a hearing. Was it not?
No, we voted to have a hearing, but that's separate from any investigation. I mean, we voted to have a public hearing, but the public hearing was then put on hold in light of the investigation that was to be conducted by the sheriff. Look, I misspoke. When I say we voted, that's not true. Just to clear the record, there was no vote taken in any executive session. The discussion was the sheriff was going to conduct an investigation and there was a conference call had with the sheriff. In that conference call, it was my understanding from the discussion that the investigation was not going to be criminal in nature. In fact, I wrote a letter to the sheriff, through Mr. Hall, and laid out the parameters for that investigation at the request of the sheriff. Now, I understand that Sheriff Long didn't necessarily take that same, that same thing from the meeting that I took, but, and he's conducting a criminal investigation, but the two are separate, separate and apart. If he's going to conduct criminal investigation, he's going to do that. But I just think it is an exigent circumstance. I think we need to know and the citizens have a right to know where things are. Apparently, there's some on this board that may have information that others don't have. And I think we should all be privy to that information and where things are.
Yes.
I agree with the exigent circumstances. I think Commissioner Crutcher summed it up very well. We are bleeding money every day and that to me causes the exigent circumstance. It's like we had a water tap where the money was just, the water was just flowing and nobody was counting it. We're, we're, we're paying for people that are not working while we pay overtime for officers to work 12-hour shifts and hire new officers and things of that nature. To me, it's not unreasonable to periodically, as a commissioner and as responsible to the citizens that have inquired of me, to be able to give an update on what's going on. And I, quite frankly, I don't, I don't feel competent to do that because there's no discussion going on. And I understand a criminal investigation, but I also understand that these people were put on administrative leave, put on leave for administrative items, not for criminal items. And so there's a, to me, there's a conflict that we've yet to resolve as to, as to that. So I just, I don't think there's harm in everybody sharing what they can legally share at this point so that we're all have the same understanding.
Me personally, I don't think it falls. I'll listen to what the attorney says. I don't think it is. But in light of what Commissioner Johnson said, and if there is something we need to know, then I would say. But as of right now, I think the, you know, the sheriff's department's winding down and we're premature. I think that, but if we want to, if somebody wants to enlighten us in something they know, then let's go for it, put it on there. But I think you're at risk of trying to take it on your own bull by the hand and, you know, if you know something's winding down, you know, besides for discussion, I don't see, I mean, to me, it would be more for discussion than action because there's no time to prepare for anything. We don't have all the information, so that's my opinion. Yeah.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself as I have in the pass on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I say one other thing?
Sure.
I want to be sure that the board understands. I was just laying out information so you can determine the board. It's their function to determine whether it's an exigent circumstance or not. Commissioner Crutcher was exactly correct. If, if somebody wants to investigate something criminal, the grand jury can investigate anything they want to, whether you agree, I agree, the board agrees, the city agrees. But I was just laying out things that I wanted you to consider and obviously you have. Whether you vote to have a hearing or not is, and I don't mean it disrespectfully, it's no concern of mine. The only thing that I wanted to do is make sure that you knew the position so that you could determine if there is an exigent circumstance, if you make that determination. That's your prerogative. If there's not an exigent circumstance, that's also your prerogative. I just wanted to make sure the board made an enlightened decision.
Okay. So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is discuss the investigation. I'd like to start off, talk to Sheriff Long. On Monday, he said that, that they will be closing up on Friday and give us something, but as of right now, we know nothing more than we did before, unless Commissioner Johnson or somebody else wants to bring something to light. So moving forward with something else before Friday just seems unpremature because originally, when we talked to Jeff Long, he said that they would do the interviews, they would put together a report, they would give their recommendations and they would come back and present it to us. So I just think it's, if they've already gone through the process, yes, it may be internal issues that we're looking at, but they were investigating any, any and everything that the officers wanted to talk about. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. With all due respect, I've been hearing for about a month now that we're going to know something by Friday. I mean, I've been hearing that for a month. And this is no disrespect to Sheriff Long. Again, this was gratuitous on their part to, I guess, I mean, unless they just chose to conduct a criminal investigation, which they certainly have the authority to do, but this is not pointed toward him. My point all along has been that the criminal investigation has nothing to do with the administrative part of this matter. If this was a policy and procedure issue where we place people on administrative leave with pay, then we as a city, from an administrative standpoint, need to take some sort of action. That may not be within the authority of this board, but I'm getting really impatient and tired of inaction. This has gone on long enough. There are two separate issues. The criminal issue, if the sheriff chooses to present this to the grand jury or whatever they may have found in their investigation and an indictment or a no-true bill comes out, then that's what happens. But we as a city, from an administrative standpoint, need to take some action. And I don't see how that in any way compromises what the sheriff is doing. I can't, and maybe Larry can offer some legal authority, but I keep hearing that there's some legal basis for all of this. We've spent so much time worrying about lawsuits and what may happen and whether we can do this or that, that we're just constrained to where we can't do anything. I mean, we're just, we're stuck in neutral, going nowhere.
Well, I mean, no disrespect, but I think Mr. Hall was in the process of investigation and was taking action, but because there was a lot of pointing fingers and a lot of people buttoning in, that other people got involved and we determined that maybe an outside agency needed to look in to it.
But Mayor, certainly when we, when we, when we discussed the possibility of an outside agency looking in and had a conference call with the sheriff, I don't think anyone left that room thinking that it was going to turn into a criminal investigation. I think the thought was is that there was going to be an internal investigation about the policies and procedures and whether or not some administrative issues had taken place or policy procedure violation had taken place. And now this has morphed into something else and here we are. So I think that's where I'm having trouble, is it just shifted in focus. I never, and maybe the sheriff has found something. I'm not privy to what's, what's happened with our investigation. Maybe there's something there. But at least initially with the information that we had been provided as a board, I never really viewed this as a criminal issue or there being any criminal exposure there. I've always viewed this as this is an administrative type issue and a policy and procedure issue that the administration should have dealt with. And in fairness, Mr. Hall may have made a decision, but there was information, has, as has been the case throughout this process, that has continued to come to light about the integrity of where things were at that particular point in time. And I was concerned, I was concerned and I'll, I'll fully take responsibility that I'm probably the cause for part of this delay based on information I'd received. That's fine. But that was, even that happened the end of February.
Yeah.
So we're still talking about something that happened well over a month and a half ago, two, almost two months ago.
Go ahead.
The concern for me is not the length of the investigation because if it takes them six months to determine the facts, then that's six months we should invest. The bothersome part of this to me is the changing from an administrative type investigation to a criminal type investigation and our actions as it pertains to the type of leave these employees are on. If we are not waiting on an administrative investigation, it is common that you leave people on pay for an administrative investigation until you determine. It is not common and in fact, it's not our practice because we sent Sergeant Connor home when we thought he had done something criminal. We sent Sergeant Connor home without pay. So my concern is that, not how long the investigation runs because I want them to do it right. Whatever it is, clear them, don't clear them, whatever happens, I want it to be factual. My concern is in looking at it from a fiscal and a consistent point of view, if what we are waiting on is a criminal investigation, then I think, I think it warrants a determination whether or not they're on the right kind of leave. That's, that's my concern. Because I think that we placed them on administrative, we placed them on paid leave for administrative, potential administrative violations. We are now, as it appears, based upon just what I've heard tonight, we are waiting a criminal determination from the sheriff's department, which is a different leave than the administrative.
Well, I don't know if there's a criminal total. We asked them to come in and evaluate our organization and because there were allegations, that's why the outside agency comes. In the end, they're still doing- comes. In the end, they're still doing the same thing that they've always done, is they interviewed these people, and with the outside agency, it's going to weed out if there was anything criminal, and then give, come back and meet with us, and, you know, give us the reports for we can use for final determination, the, if we want to use it as far as policy and procedure violations. I think originally that we, there was policy and procedure issues or concern, and Mr. Hall was taking action, whether or not it was how the board wanted to, but it's really not our decision. That's, that's the crazy part, is we can't make those decisions as a board on how Mr. Hall handles the policy and procedure violations for the employee. So, I don't know that we're anywhere different today than we were. Now, I find it frustrating to have all these people on leave, and we may have, and somehow made a mistake of having them on leave, but this is how it's all transpired, as from, was this, you know, a investigation and a policy and procedure violation, to where we have an outside agency looking into it.
And I may be, I may be wrong, Mayor, but I, I thought it was shared with us that the Sheriff's Department had informed us that they were, they were looking into it from a criminal aspect only.
Well, he said, Jeff Long explained to me, after Shayna wrote, Commissioner Crutcher wrote the letter, explained to me that they were going to take an internal look of our investigator, our department from beginning to end. But that they would be, that's what he meant, was a criminal. I mean, he would look at everything, listen to them, take their statements, provide all the statements to us, and then we could, they are taking our policy and procedures, they are writing any violations. So, in the end, yes, they may look into criminal too, but we should have a report, and it's my understanding, where it's going to be highlighted. They've looked at our policy and procedures and given us any potential violations.
Well, if that's the case, then, then that's, that is a broader scope than where I thought it had migrated to. And that, that, then it would be appropriate for them to remain on paid leave if there was an administrative aspect. I just didn't think they were involved in administrative aspect.
Well, we still have to make the final decision. They can't come in and do it for us. So, there will be one more step. When Mr. Hall gets that report, he's going to have to determine, am I going to have a, you know, a board, or am I going to make the decision, or is the board, you know, you know, there will be one more step. It's not going to be done on Monday.
It was my understanding too, like Commissioner Mcelveys, that this, this, that Sheriff Long was adamant that this was not a, a policy and procedure review of the City of Fairview. This was a criminal investigation.
Where did you get that?
Through conversations with, with, through you. I mean, through conversations with you, because you have sort of been the liaison to Sheriff Long, and which rightfully so. I mean, as the mayor, I, I want you to be the point person. But through conversations with you, that's where I have, I have reached that conclusion. Maybe I was wrong, but I, I thought that I was told that, that, that Mr., that Sheriff Long was, was not going to do that, that it was always a criminal investigation, and that's what he was going to, that's what it was going to be.
Well, he did say, after, the first time we originally talked, after you did the letter, and, you know, but he did say his, the way he, because I, we kept using the terminology, in your letter, you used the terminology as internal. And he said, well, what I mean by internal is, we're going to look at your whole organization as a whole and see if there is any criminal, and then at the end, we will give you a report, and we will have a sit-down with you of the potential violations. I mean, I've said that all along. Anybody that asked.
Mayor, is it appropriate for me to just have comments, not vote? I'll recuse myself.
You can make comments.
Okay. Can I ask a couple of questions? When was the last contact with the sheriff?
I first went down there. I've had no contact with the sheriff. He's never called.
Has Chief Harris had any contact with the sheriff?
Yes, sir.
And when was that?
Actually, I had one this morning.
This morning? And did the sheriff give him a timeframe?
We've got some information. We've got to get ready for tomorrow to get to Chief Harris to get to Sheriff Long. And it's, I think, the mayor made the proper statement a while ago. When they got into the interviews, there was so much finger pointing that it proceeded in a different direction. It's, it's my viewpoint.
So, with, with that meeting, was there any indication of a timeframe from the sheriff?
Chief Harris didn't say that this morning. He just said, we got to get some more information for him tomorrow.
Is it your understanding through conversations with Chief Harris that this is a criminal investigation?
He really hadn't made that statement to me either way. See, Chief Harris has been the one that's called more about it, I guess, than anyone here. And that, you know, he's hadn't made any other statements unless, until he made those this morning to me.
I'm a part of this board. I'm just, I'm embarrassed this has happened under my watch. I mean, that we're still sitting here. I'll just tell you. I'm just, I, I can't understand it. But here we are.
Mr. Hall, were you going to take administrative action?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you stopped from taking administrative action because of the investigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Who stopped you?
The board.
Hey, how does the board have the legal authority to stop you from taking administrative action?
Well, that's what was determined in that meeting, that y'all would send it to Sheriff Long, Sheriff Long. I already had the letter in place.
Okay. So, with that being said, I, I don't know if there's anything else we want to discuss. I mean, if we want to move forward and not wait for the final reports, that's, you know, fine with me as far as a board, but I think we've gone this long into short change when we have had an outside agency come in and evaluate.
Two.
Two.
TBI came in too.
Well, I don't think they did a internal, yeah, of every.
They looked for criminal though.
So, um.
They left with doing nothing. And they left with doing nothing. I mean, they left without there being any criminal action pursued. And that, that was, that was the whole purpose of us, of us getting with, with the Sheriff's Department. We were conducting an investigation from an administrative standpoint. There was information, there was, like you, like you said, you properly characterized, there was all sort of finger pointing, not only down there in the police department, but up here and everywhere else. And at that point, I was concerned about the integrity of the investigation that was being conducted internally, based on information that had, I had received. I was one of the persons that wanted to have a meeting to discuss, look, there is other information that is coming out, there are these things that have not been done. Based on that information, I am very concerned about where we are in this process. I was all for the sheriff looking at this from a policy and procedure standpoint, which was exactly what the parameters in my letter laid out. But then, after the TBI had already come in and said, they didn't see this as any, or, well, I didn't hear them say that, but it was relayed to me, that there was nothing there criminal, then now it has turned in, although it's not been characterized as such tonight, it has in the past been characterized as the sheriff is now conducting a criminal investigation, and that is the only focus of the sheriff. It's not to do a policy and procedures, you know, review of our city or the department. And I'm, I'm, I just still don't see what the two have to do with one another. I still don't see why we can't take some sort of administrative, not we as the board, but we as the city. I'm, I'm a taxpayer too. Why we can't take some sort of action from an administrative management standpoint, despite the fact that there may be some criminal investigation pending. It just, to me, it doesn't, I, I can't connect the two. And maybe somebody knows something that they're just not sharing. I don't know, but.
Mayor, would you like to speak to it if we brought back anybody that possibly might have some criminal charges against him?
I, I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Hall.
I was asking Larry if he might want to address the issue, if we brought back anybody that does have, eventually has some criminal problems with this.
Well, there's not a whole lot that I could say about that, because you're dealing with a lot of unknowns. It'd be important, what nature is the charges, what happened when they came back, you know, this type of thing. I think if you brought somebody back and then you had a criminal indictment come down against them, obviously you would put that person on some sort of suspension until that, that played out, because they're not going to participate in any kind of a proceeding that would be procedures violation, because they're going to have a right not to incriminate themselves. But without knowing what specifically they were charged with, you know, you don't want someone out in a, in a uniform that is under, is under indictment. Now, I fully realize that indictment is not a conviction. It's, it's nothing more than a list of charges that I did such and such that violated the criminal code. I think you'd have to look at that at the time they were there. If you, if you brought them back and then some indictment came down, we'd have to deal with it at that time. But, you know, now it'd just be mere speculation. One, you'd be speculating there was criminal charge. Two, you'd be speculating what the nature of the criminal charge is, if you're trying to say what you should do. And, you know, I, I don't have crystal ball. I couldn't go out there and say, because certainly you would have to deal with it. You can't have people that had criminal charges against them out being police officers. But, you know, I'm hearing two different things here. You know, is this, as was mentioned earlier, anybody, the sheriff certainly could investigate something criminal, but I'm also hearing that you should be getting a report about your, your policies and procedures. And if it might not change in any way what, what you would do. He may have some very good information that would need to be included in those, in, in any charges of an administrative nature. If it came down, you'd have to go back and amend your, your charges. Certainly, he'd have to have some time to respond to those, those amendments. I don't, I don't know what the sheriff has uncovered, because obviously, I have not conducted an investigation. I don't know what's, what's out there, what potentially might be out there. But, you know, certainly the, you know, you can reinstitute your administrative procedures. The only problem that you would have there is if, if he came back and he had statements from somebody that says, this was not the person that did it, this person did it. Then you're, you know, you're going to have to proceed on what you've got from your, your investigation. And you've got two, two investigations that, one was in, in some status of going forward or completed or whatever, and then you've got the other ones. You're going to have to reconcile those two. But, you know, I, I couldn't speculate on what, other than the fact that if you've got criminal charges against somebody that was preferred, and indictment came down, and they were, any employee of the city, you would have to, you'd have to deal with that appropriately at the time. And I don't know what that would be without knowing what the charge is.
Well, I think this is a little premature to even say. I just think, from my understanding of the whole process, is, we thought one thing. We did think, we all thought that he was going to do an internal investigation. But after speaking to him and receiving the letter, he gave an explanation what his ideal of an internal investigation was, and that they would be looking at criminal aspects, and they would do all the interviews, they would write a report, they will find if, you know, policy and procedures, what violated, and give, sit down with us and give us that report for us then to take any action if there was anything found. I don't know that we're anywhere else unless we just don't want to wait for the outside agencies. But then we're back to ground one, and Mr. Hall needs to conduct his own investigation. So, it seems like we're close. Yes.
Well, I think that was the point of the, of the public, of the public hearing. I was voting to have a public hearing if and when that time comes. I mean, certainly, I don't want to do that in the middle of the sheriff's investigation. Tonight wasn't necessarily to take any action. It was to get an update of where we are, because there's, you know, not a lot of news. And then there's, apparently, there's conflicting news. So, I just, I just wanted to know where we were. It wasn't necessarily to say, hey, I want to vote on something.
As I said earlier, there was progress this week. And until I get something written from the sheriff himself, I'd like to not announce that progress tonight. But if I get it tomorrow, y'all will get the email the minute I get it.
What I would probably do is, I mean, this is just me talking. The interim manager would say, Sheriff, I've got five mean board members that are ready to do something, and they need some information. And, and I'm, you know, here I am in the position. I'm the figurehead of this city. I need to, I need to know what's going on.
Well, I think he probably read that in the Tennessean.
Read what in the Tennessean?
It was in there.
What was in there? I don't know.
Our last meeting about how we were wanting them to, you know, come up, and we were trying to hurry him up. We thought they were taking too long and stuff like that.
Well, it's nothing to do with me thinking he's taking too long. It's just, it's just, I think we can get some sort of information. I mean, if he's doing, I don't, I still, for the life of me, I've always thought, based off information that I have received since the sheriff took this over, he is doing a criminal investigation. That's what I've been told. And I couldn't wrap my mind around, if he's doing a criminal investigation, then why we as a board can't continue with whatever administrative action the city deemed appropriate? That's what I'm trying to reconcile in my mind.
Well.
I'm not trying to hurry anybody up. And I want to go on the record. I, I don't know Sheriff Long. I'm not trying to hurry Sheriff Long up. This is not in any, any way disrespectful to him. He, what he's doing is a gratuity to the city. That's not what I'm saying. I don't know what was in the Tennessean. I don't read the Tennessean very often. But that's, that's not what I'm doing or attempting to do, if that's the way it's being perceived. But I want to see, from a management standpoint, us do whatever we need to do appropriate, to deal with this from an administrative standpoint. That's what I'm concerned about. And that's what I've been concerned about since early in February.
Well, for the record, when I have briefed the people, the conversation of Jeff Long, I have said that they were going to give us all the information, our policy and procedure. That was never left out of any conversation I've had. So, I would just like to go ahead and put that on the record.
Patty, this is not, or Mayor Carroll, this is not me trying to say.
I don't think you are.
That you, that you're giving any misinformation. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm not coming after you with this. I'm just trying to, I, I really believe that this was, this had turned into a criminal matter. That's all I'm saying. And, and I couldn't understand. I mean, again, I couldn't understand if it was a criminal matter, why we had to wait to do something administratively. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
If I could have, I would have done it already.
Well, who has stopped you from doing that? Well, who, who's giving you the advice not to take whatever action you deem appropriate?
There's so many, so many finger pointings that's happened, that it's best and wisest to wait on the investigation report, written report. And I agree with you 100%. I hate to see them being paid when they're not working, you know. But there's nothing the city manager really can do about it at this point until we get a written investigative report.
Is that your position, Mr. Cantrell? I mean, is that where Mr. Hall's getting that? Where, where are we getting that from? I mean, how is he forming that opinion? I don't know what.
I don't know what Mr. Hall's thinking. I do think that if you've got an investigation, and I'm hearing different types of, of what's there, but I do think we should need, we, we do need to get that resolved before we proceed because we could be out in the cold with, with something that has not, was not properly completed, the investigation. And if the person, the reason that, I would support the people being on administrative leave if you're looking and did, because if the, if the results of the investigation is that they did, didn't do anything or did something that was less than that, then these people have got some pretty hefty damages for not, by not being paid during the time that they were on administrative leave if, if it turns out that they were not culpable in what, what the charges would be.
This is a rhetorical question, but how long are we as a city gonna leave people at home being paid with no action? That's all I'm asking, and I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just.
Soon as I get the report, we'll make a determination that day.
Well, and I do agree, and I, with all fairness, your questions are valid about how long we're gonna proceed with this. But I do feel like once we put it to another agency, we can't control the situation. We're kinda at their mercy. But I do think that the sheriff's department will give us some very needed direction as far as policy and procedures, and they will, they proceeded with all the interviews. So we had this outside agent, so there wasn't conflicts. And I think then in the end, it may have been a long process, but it'll be worth it because we can feel good that it was done correctly. Okay. Then we'll move on. No vote taken. And that will give us the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I just would like to tip my hat to the middle school graduation this week. It was a very nice affair. Of course, the children were tickled to death graduating. But one thing that happened there that I'm very proud to see that it happened, they named the gym out there after Donna Blitsoe with a nice bronze plaque that they're gonna present. Coach Hughes spoke, Coach Span, I think, and Ricky was there to accept them. But I think that was very nice of Gary Schrader and his staff to get that taken care of because it was well deserved. And I just wanna tip my hat to the graduation at the middle school. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cantrell?
I just have one thing, Mayor. Just to bring the board up to date, last Thursday, which was the 12th of May, I argued the motion, the city's motion to dismiss Hall and Paving Company's lawsuit filed against the city and First Federal Bank. If you probably remember, but I'll state it, it won't take but a minute. This grew out of the incident up in Leverett Meadows, the paving of the street up there and the letter of credit, et cetera, a whole bunch of things there that we've gone into that I won't go into tonight. But just to bring it to where it was, I argued that motion to dismiss on the basis that the complaint failed to state a, a complaint that, that relief could be granted upon. The Chancellor Johnson took the motion under advisement and said she would write an opinion and release it. Now, when that's coming out, I don't know. It'll be, it just depends on how busy, and I know the lady's busy. But it just depends on when she gets to it to write that opinion, but she did take it under advisement. And as soon as I know what the outcome is, I will send it to Mr. Hall and Ms. Brandon and ask that they distribute it to all the board members. I just wanted to let you know that that has been argued and we're waiting for a decision. That's all I have.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor Sutton?
I just wanna congratulate all the seniors that are graduating tomorrow night and looking forward to seeing them move forward in their college careers, those who choose to do so. And part of the heritage that we have in this city is the great school system that we have and awards for people like John Blitsoe and, and different people that are well-known in this city for putting out more than what they take in, they're anxious to give, give of themselves. So congratulate all of them. I, I do wanna ask the city manager two questions. How are we standing on the paving over there on Joe Ann's and the, and the park?
I don't have an engineering report on the Joe Ann's classroom, but the paving is out to me.
Okay, on both?
One, the paving through.
On bo, on both sections? You had the parking lot and then you had the paved trail going back to the classroom?
I have an engineering report on it.
Okay. Good enough?
Question to have.
Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Busell?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna be sure everybody understands that as it pertains to my opinion on the police investigation, I'm, I'm impatient is a good word about it, but I'm not so impatient that I want a wrong conclusion or a hurry-up judgment about it. It's strictly, to me, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we're not in limbo and that something is working, and I did get that tonight. So I appreciate the other members of the board and city attorney and city manager engaging us in a little conversation just to reassure us that it is moving in a, in a direction that is going to bring us to a conclusion. And hopefully that conclusion will be based upon fact and then a proper judgment can be made. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crutcher?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just echo some of what Commissioner Busell said. It was the reason for me asking this put on the agenda was just simply to get an update. I think we all needed to kinda be on the same page of where things were and to provide that information to citizens that have a right to know as well what, what they can, can know, and we can know legally based on where things are. But again, it wasn't anything directed towards Sheriff Long. I do think that, you know, he's, he's obviously undertaking this at the request of the city and, and, and I wanna get a proper outcome too. And, and I am impatient, but I, I, I believe that there were two separate issues here. And maybe they're so intertwined that they just can't be separated. Maybe that's the case, but there was some clarity brought to that tonight. But I hope there's something that, I hope we have some kind of resolution soon on this issue. Thank you.
I just wanna, you know, thank everybody for just being patient with it and trying to do the right thing. That's always been my standpoint is, and there was just too much going on. And I know it's frustrating, and it, it has to be frustrating for the people that are on leave. So I just, hopefully at the end of all this, then we can come back and be a better department and we can get things in the right direction. And sometimes you have to wade through, and I, I see in the end, the police department being stronger than ever. And I think it just is gonna take time and some of this need to be dealt with, and we have some great guys that work for us and, you know, they deserve a lot of respect. So I hope, I'm tired of the negative light on the city. I'm sick of it. And the best thing to solve that problem is quit giving them anything to write about. You know, hopefully we're getting there. We're taking actions that I've seen to correct some things and fix the wrongs. And, you know, financially, we're in a great place compared to last year. Never even dreamed we could be where we are. It took some bold moves and some tough decisions. We're about to come on to another budget. We're gonna have to be tough again. It's real easy to wanna spend the money, but we still need to be very conservative and do what's right for the city for the future. And the stronger we can get our foundation, the better off we'll be. And we are at that great time where we will be seeing a lot of change, and I just hope we do it right. Because I love this community. I love the way the small town feel. I hope we can grow in a way that we're proud of. And I think some of the stuff that we're doing right now, trying to get staff ready and prepared is important. So with that being said, I would also like to congratulate all the seniors. I really wanna take my hats off. I went to the Valerie Willmore Celebration of Life. The high school did a wonderful job. Ms. Willmore, I had the pleasure of working with her for several years, and she just was a loved teacher, and she just did so much for the community. And we will, and, you know, a resident, so we'll, we'll definitely miss her, but I just, I was so impressed and, and you could tell it was out of love, you know? The staff and faculty, you know? And it was all done out of love, but it was a beautiful ceremony. Just ask everybody to stay positive, not always looking at the negative. Let's, you know, sometimes we have to realize our mistakes and we have to put some focus on them to correct them, but if we always focus on the negative, we're never gonna move forward. So I just ask everybody to keep that focus as we move forward. I'm sure there'll be a nice article in the paper on the police investigation, and we just don't know, and just not to jump to conclusions, and let's see it to the end. Because when we start basing our opinions and they are not on facts, then that's harmful to everybody. So with that being said, yes.
If I can, Mayor. I got a response back from Tammy at the Boys and Girls Club. She's gonna be out of town Sunday, but I've got a minivan and I'll be over at the church to shuttle, I can hold about six people, to get people over there, because it's, it's gonna be a dangerous walk, especially if people, you know, not real careful. So I'll be there, and if anybody else has got one.
Great. And then I'm gonna request two traffic, traffic officers up there to try to control the traffic in both directions.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Great. Thank you. Okay, if I can get a motion?
Move adjourned.
I'll move.